Good evening, everyone. I'll call this special city council meeting to order on November 20th, 2017. I see no cards for the open forum, so at this time I would ask you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would entertain a motion seeking approval of the minutes of the special joint city council, HRA and Planning Commission work session of October 16th, 2017, special city council work session of October 17th, 2017, for youth commission interviews, special city council work session of October 17th, 2017, for HRA interviews, special joint city council, HRA and Planning Commission work session of October 24th, 2017, and the regular city council meeting of October 24th, 2017.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the annual meeting with the Friendship City Commission.
Mr. Mayor, city councilman and councilwoman, for those of you that do not know me, my name is Ahmad Ansari, and I'm the chairman of the Richfield Friendship City Commission. Today, I deliver to you the commission's annual report. For those of you who are not familiar with our commission, our core mission is to maintain an ongoing relationship with our friendship city, Heredia, located near the capital city of San Jose in Costa Rica. The relationship is strictly cultural and does not include any economic cooperation. Since our last report to the city council in October of 2016, the commission has been busy on several fronts, building relationships within the community here in Richfield and with our counterparts in Costa Rica. By far, our greatest accomplishment this year was the dedication of Sofia, the beautiful sculpture of a young girl kicking a soccer ball like you see on the screen above me, that sits adjacent to the building here at Heredia Park. To kick off the planning for the dedication ceremony, our entire commission this year held their first annual meeting at the Public Works Faculty or Facility where our group was present to uncreate the newly arrived sculpture from Costa Rica, and that was very exciting for the group. Cynthia Mendel, who is our permanent ambassador to Costa Rica or to Heredia, Costa Rica, contacted the PTO of the dual-language school here in Richfield to arrange music for the ceremony through their youth choir. Cynthia also arranged travel for the sculptor Guillermo Hernandez from Heredia, Costa Rica, and his son as well from Texas, as well as the family of the young lady that inspired the sculpture, Sofia. The city staff was able to install a new outdoor park sign for the Heredia Park just in time for the ceremony, which was nice. The ceremony itself was great success, as many of you know, many of you attended, and the turnout was very decent and the weather was great as well. And for that, thank the council members for attending. Moving on, this year, we also revised the commission bylaws. They had not been revised since 2003, so it was a good time for us to look at them and figure out what was, what made sense and what was obsolete from these bylaws. We restructured the bylaws to fully comply with City Code Section 305 regarding commissions and boards, including using Sturgis parliamentary procedures to govern meeting conduct. We also established a nine-member group, including two youth members with voting privileges. Also, the youth members that we had this year, Sharon Amighi and Hadiya Bucker, were great contributors to the commission, so please send us more this upcoming January when you do your recruiting efforts at the high school. Also, we performed an inventory of commission items that are currently stored at the municipal center and the Public Works Facility. All items were accounted for, and these items range from gifts that we received in the past from Costa Rica, posters, tents, and other pieces that we use for city events. The commission also participated in the unity in the community event that was conducted on May 25th and Penfest on September 17th to promote commission activities and recruit membership. Finally, just like the rest of the city, meetings, the Friendship City Commission meetings are open to the public. These meetings are typically held on the third Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM at the municipal center over here, and we will be seeking candidates, actually, at the beginning of 2018 for 2018 through 2021 membership. So if you're interested, please join us by going to the Richfield city website and applying. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Not a question, I just want to say that I didn't have an opportunity to attend the dedication, but I met the sculptor earlier that morning when he came and did a walkthrough, and a really fascinating gentleman, and excited to be here. That, I mean, it was like, I guess, you know, artists give birth to their works, and he was particularly proud of this one, and I think Richfield is certainly proud of it also. It was really great that he had the opportunity to come up and attend the dedication because he really brought the enthusiasm and everything from our sister city, and it was much appreciated. So, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to just say thank you so much for your leadership on the commission, and if you could pass that thanks along to the rest of the commission members as well. I was able to go to the dedication, and it was absolutely just a gorgeous day. I think it was raining for a little bit, and then it cleared, and we were able to go outside. But to meet Sofia, to meet her mom, to meet Guillermo, to see all the community members there, was just really exciting, and you could see so much pride in everybody's face from the commission members to Sofia to Guillermo and council members alike. And there's a, isn't there a poem also?
That is correct.
And is, who wrote the poem?
I believe Guillermo was one who wrote it.
Also, he also, okay, I couldn't remember if he wrote it or somebody else, but that's, again, a really, and is it in Spanish and English?
Uh, I...
Or is, I can't, I can't remember.
The published version is in English, but, yeah, the original wasn't Spanish.
Okay. But I just, these are the things that really make our community a welcoming, inclusive community, and I think just having that piece of art there, having that little child be the piece of art, the poem, and providing that welcoming space at City Hall is really important. So, thank you for all your work in doing that.
Thank you.
It's a nice, warm memory on this cold November night, so, thank you.
And I was just gonna add, that was one of the first events as a new council member that I was able to participate, and that was the first time I met you. I just want to thank you very publicly for your leadership here, and in addition to the sculpture, I think that event showed the fruit of so much good work and activity and leadership on your part and on everybody in the commission's part, that we had about 150 people here, we had kids here, we had a lot of people who've traveled to Heredia and come back, and so that exchange really building friendship, and you hope that activities like that have kind of a cumulative effect, and that event, I think, demonstrated the fruit of your years of work, because that's not something that comes from one event, but it comes from years of working together. And I'd also, just one other thing, I want to thank you for, you guys have participated and participated in Penfest, and we had one of the most successful Penfests ever with close to 10,000 people, and you guys were a part of that, and so I thank you for that and encourage you guys to come next year.
Thank you, and we'll be there next year.
Great, great.
That's good, thanks.
At this time, I would move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved, we move on to the consent calendar. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. The consent calendar, for those in the audience, those at home, contain several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and their recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further city council action on these items is necessary. So, tonight, we start off with item A, which is consideration of the approval of a resolution approving deferred, deferral of a special assessment against an owner-occupied property. Item B is consideration of the renewal of public health and environmental health mutual aid agreement. Item C, consideration of the approval of an agreement between the Hennepin County Human Services and Public Health Department and the City of Richfield Police Department for continuing funds for a police cadet and/or a community service officer position and the Joint Community Police Partnership Training in 2018. Item D is consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 12th, 2017, for the consideration of the renewal of on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for 2018 for Alta Haban Mexican Grill LLC doing business as Alta Haban Mexican Grill, Thompson's Fireside Pizza Incorporated doing business as Fireside Foundry, GM Richfield LLC doing business as Four Points by Sheridan Minneapolis Airport, Frenchman's Pub Incorporated doing business as Frenchman's, VPC Richfield Pizza LLC doing business as Giordano's of Richfield, Wiltshire Restaurants LLC doing business as Hulahan's Restaurant and Bar, Faison Incorporated doing business as Khan's Mongolian Barbecue, Lynn 65 LLC doing business as Lynn 65 Kitchen and Bar, Pizza Luce 7 Incorporated doing business as Pizza Luce, Minneapolis Richfield American Legion Post 435, and Fred Babcock VFW Post 5555 doing business as Four Nickels Food and Drink. Item E is consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 12th, 2017, for the consideration of the renewal of on-sale wine and on-sale 3.2% malt liquor licenses for 2018 for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill, Devani's Incorporated doing business as Devani's Pizza and Hot Hoagies, Joyce Potaya Thai Restaurant LLC doing business as Joyce Potaya Thai Restaurant, Minnesota Junior Hockey Group LLC doing business as Minnesota Magicians, and that's located at the Richfield Ice Arena, My Burger Operations LLC doing business as My Burger, Patrick's French Bakery Incorporated doing business as Patrick's Bakery and Cafe, and Henry Two doing business as Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant. And then finally, item F, consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 12th, 2017, for the consideration of the renewal of pawnbroker and secondhand goods dealer license for 2018 for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved. Next item for consideration is for the approval of a resolution authorizing the refunding of the $4,550,000 GO Capital Improvement Plan Bonds Series 2009A dated January 14th, 2009, with the $3,205,000 GO Capital Improvement Plan Refunding Bonds Series 217B. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Brian Riley here of Ellers and Associates, and he will go over the sales results, which all, they were good news.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I always like to see these, you go right to the savings, your current savings and future savings, it always makes you feel pretty good. Good evening.
No.
How about now? There we go. And yes, the savings are the most important parts, so I'll try to keep it relatively short and sweet and focus on those aspects, to the mayor's point. Good evening, my name is Brian Riley with Ellers. I'll walk you through the results of the city's bond sale today. Before that, I'll just reference the handout that you should have all received, I'll kind of just walk generally through this. If you have questions, please just stop me as we move throughout, we don't necessarily need to wait till the end. First order of good news is you'll notice some numbers that are a little different from the title of the resolution that was just read. We did receive some favorable results, and as such, were able to reduce the size of the bond issue. A number of things occurred in that regard, some of which I won't go into great detail, but based upon the way the bids came in for the bonds, and for those of you that are not aware, when we sell bonds, Ellers is the city's advisor. We help you package up everything, basically, in relationship to, you know, where the market's at, what underwriters or basically bond dealers are interested in, and then we put that out there for competitive proposals, just like a lot of other things you do, and we allow then those dealers to put forth their best foot in terms of both their costs, their fees and expenses, and what the ultimate interest rates are going to be on those bonds, with the award then going to the lowest interest cost proposal. One slight variance from the standard operating procedure that we usually have is, we did postpone the sale from last week, and I just want to assure all of you that that didn't impact our results. We did only receive two bids for purchase of the bonds. We're typically anywhere from four to six, maybe plus sometimes, and that's, a lot of that is based on the city's strong credit rating, which we'll talk about in a moment. In this case, though, those bids were representative of market rates, so we had a lot of confidence in the results. We did go back and look at some of the sales from last week, and you're very much on par, to use bond parlance with the rest of the marketplace with comparable credits that were sold last week. So, we have a high level of confidence that you did just fine. The firm that brought forth the best proposal was Baird. In this case, it was their desk out of New Jersey. The other proposal was just off of Baird's, they came in at 216. The second bid was at 2.2%, but the interest cost differential between those two is $26,000. So certainly, we do like to see some level of competition there. As far as some of the other statistics go, we were able to reduce the bond size, about $160,000. Some of that is a result of reductions in the original estimates with respect to the fees and expenses. We always try to be conservative in that regard, so we did have some reductions there. Additionally, Baird paid the city more than face value for their bonds. I'm not going to get into the math on that unless you specifically want to, but we had some dollars available to then reduce the issue size. So that's a net benefit, because every time you have principal, you're paying interest on it, right? So we get the compounded effect of that. Ultimately, what we're most interested in is the savings. Over the remaining term of the bonds, the city will be saving approximately $370,000 in just direct cash flow savings. That's about $40,000 better than our original estimates when we were here a while back. If you were to take that stream of dollars then back to today and discount them, it's about $325,000, $30,000. We like to measure that in relationship to how much we're refinancing in principal. We like to see these kind of transactions be a minimum of, say, 3% to 5%, you're at over 11%. So, very strong refinancing, you did very well. We hit the market at a really great time, we're still in a period of generationally low interest rates, so across the board, we're happy to see these results and see the city save these kind of dollars. The bid tabulation is attached, you can see the two firms and their proposals, and then unless there are questions, the last thing I wanted to walk you through was the city's rating report. Just to give you an update on that, I think that's a valuable third-party review of the city's overall credit profile, and you can gain a lot of information, I think, from an independent party's point of view, so to speak. So I'll pause if there are any questions related to the numbers, which do follow towards the back end, but I don't intend to go through in detail. Okay? Quickly then, I'll just walk you through the rating report from Standard and Poor's. The city's rating was affirmed at AA+; the only credit rating higher than that is AAA. So right below that is AA+. So that's a very strong rating. There's a, you know, very small proportion of the overall market that's rated AAA, not a whole lot more at the AA+ level. It's a very nice cross-section if you were to review it. So, you're bumping right up against the highest rating category. That's for a number of reasons. There's a short bulleted list, and then there's some more detailed narrative around each of those, but fundamentally, obviously, Standard and Poor's is looking at, you know, some of the important factors regarding the city's overall credit, one of which being the local economy. You know, you have a strong tax base, strong economy. You also have a good demographic profile from that standpoint. The way they typically look at that is, say, value per capita, also, you know, income levels within the city as the comparable state and national medians. Additionally, and I'll kind of glom onto this one, most importantly, because this is an area you have direct control over, not just from a council perspective, but certainly at the staff level, is very strong management, and that speaks directly to some of the formal policies and procedures that are in place from a financial management standpoint, the interaction between staff and council in terms of reporting, and really that formalization. And then a big part of that, too, is the city's very strong fund balance, which we'll talk about in a minute. Adequate budgetary performance, you'll notice some theming in the way that these things are worded, from, say, very strong to strong to adequate, somewhat in that order from top to bottom, and that's just related to just your budgetary results being balanced the last few years. That's, you know, not a whole lot to talk about there, you do a great job of budgeting, you're typically on a break-even basis, and certainly staff does what they need to do on your end in terms of transferring dollars amongst various funds to maintain that level of performance. On a budgetary flexibility standpoint, what they're really looking at there is the level of cash on hand. That speaks also to liquidity and what the operating results are across the various funds of the city. So again, you've got very strong marks there, very good to see that. And then, that also speaks to fund balance. So if things get rough, right, for a couple of years, what can you lean on in a diminished revenue situation, and that's your very strong fund balance and cash reserves. Lastly, then, your debt and contingent liability profile. Contingent liabilities are things like pensions and other post-employment benefits. Again, not a lot of control over that. From a debt standpoint, though, you're very strong in that regard, and that's really looking at your debt in relationship to the overall value of the city, the debt per capita, and how much of the general fund budget outlays are related specifically to debt service. So you're scoring strong in all those areas. So, again, I'd encourage you to focus a lot on those things that you have direct control over. You're always trying to improve the local tax base in the economy, but a lot of those forces are outside of the control of people in the room. So, certainly kudos for maintaining that strong rating over many years, because it's been getting more difficult to keep a high credit rating in this environment. That is all I have. I'm happy to answer additional questions. If not, the resolution in front of you would basically award the bonds to Baird as the best bid and establish the terms and conditions. Closing would occur a few weeks from now, and that will essentially end the transaction, but this will lock everything in.
Thank you. I think I'll make a motion, and then we'll have comments after. So at this time, I would move the approval of a resolution authorizing the refunding of the $4,550,000 GO Capital Improvement Plan Bonds Series 2009A dated January 14th, 2009, with the $3,205,000 GO Capital Improvement Plan Refunding Bonds Series 217B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Regis, I just got one question, and maybe it's along the lines of educating both the city council and myself and the citizenry out there. When I look at this, and it's like I've said, the savings, you know, always catch your eye, and I, you know, I know, you know, some of the difference between present and future value and everything, but just in terms of the present value savings, we'll, you know, discount right now the future value savings, but it's $327,248. Am I correct in assuming that we can't go out and write a check for that? That's long-term, because we bought them down at a better interest rate, so it accrues and goes on our balance sheet, but it does, that's not additional money that we could use to buy down a levy or to pay off other things in the immediate future, correct?
No, I mean, the savings would be realized over the remaining life of the bonds, and basically, what that's going to do is, once the crossover happens on February of 2019, then we'll, you know, we'll have less principal to pay, less interest to pay, and we're, you could almost say that you are kind of buying down the levy a little bit once the crossover happens, because the levy's going to be that much less over the remaining 12 years of the bond and stuff like that, which is going to be beneficial in the long run.
A crude and layperson's analogy is, is I buy my house at 5.5%, rates come down to 4.5%, 3.5%, so I refinance, so there's enormous savings over the time. I may not have access to that, it improves the equity, improves my bottom line, so whether or not it's tangible and we can touch it, it definitely benefits the city when these sales take place.
Mayor, if I could just add, that's a great analogy. It's if somebody went out and refinanced their home, and their house payment was $1,000 a month, and they went and refinanced it, and it comes back and their house payment is now, you know, $950 a month, that's kind of what we just did for the city, and going forward till, you know, until these bonds expire, that's what we've done. We've lowered that payment, and in essence, that gets passed on to the residents, because, you know, that savings per year, which is, I don't know what it's going to be, around 30,000 bucks.
30,000, approximately, 40,000.
I mean, that comes off, that comes off the debt levy, and that means that's just a little bit of a savings for everyone, and in this community, where our tax base is so predominantly based on single-family residential, as we try to keep on building our commercial up, so that direct savings goes back to a lot of homeowners.
Great, thank you. Comments?
I just have one comment. I just want to say thank you to staff for, you know, reviewing the rationale for our AA+ rating and seeing all of the excellent fiscal management and policies that we have in place, and everything our city staff does to make that happen. It's not easy, as, you know, he had mentioned to us previously that it's harder and harder to keep that rating. So I just want to say thank you, that's, that is no small task, and it's quite amazing to have that be our rating year over year, so thank you to our staff.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Did I call a vote?
I think we passed this thing.
It's passed. Claims and payroll.
Without Councilmember Garcia here, I'll move claims and payroll.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Oops, sorry, city manager's report.
No, actually, it wasn't on the agenda, because I don't really have anything on the, oh, the second, yeah, there was a second. Yeah, I got it. You have a few minutes left over, it's not really on the agenda, but if there's any announcements or any hometown hit thing you want, anyone wants to mention, at this point, you've got a couple of minutes, you could do that if you wished. If there's anything, you know, that you think folks need to know.
See, we have to prepare, Steve.
Yeah, you have to prepare, and that's, that's just fine. We've finished in plenty of time, and we can leave it at that.
You know, I would just want to mention, I don't know if Jim Topitzhoffer is still here. They had the dedication for Jonathan O'Shaughnessy a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, yes.
And, just, just in the sense of taking a horrific tragedy and creating a peaceful venue, it really did a good job. And I want to thank, you know, city manager and Jim Topitzhoffer for, it's turn of events, we had some benches that, that didn't have the proper finish on them, so we were able to sell one to the O'Shaughnessy family to put it up. The platform and everything, and the whole, the whole, the whole scene is calming and comforting, for lack of a better term. So I think it's, it's, it's a great place, and we've got the table off and everything's been removed, so we don't have any concerns about that. And if you get a chance, if you're walking by, you just want to stop and reflect, it's not a bad place to do it.
If I could just, since we have a moment, we're not doing hometown hits, but since the chief's here, I just want to thank Chief Hen Thorne, who's fielded calls and some texts for me from citizens, and you guys don't just deal with law enforcement, you deal with mental health issues, you deal with all kinds of things, and so I just want to thank you publicly for just your, your service and your leadership, and your responsiveness even to council, council members on Sunday nights in responding to our city's needs. So that just, it's not unnoticed, it's deeply appreciated, and I want to thank you publicly for it.
You know what? I might as well just go next and say, I want to say the same thing to our chief, because he has been doing the same with myself and, and helping me figure out what to do with some of the calls that we have from residents that are complex and scary for our neighbors, so I want to second that. Thank you so much, chief, to you and your staff for doing that. I know the residents really appreciate it. There's a lot of times folks feel very alone, and... and extremely scared of what is happening to them and their families, and you have just done an excellent job of helping us be timely in addressing those issues. And I also just want to recognize some former tenants of Crossroads who are here. I wasn't sure if they were gonna speak or not, but I know that this is an important anniversary, one-year anniversary in, in the whole Crossroads story, and that it continues today, and that we continue to work on our affordable housing policies and really work as a council to think about what we can do, what policies we can pass to protect our affordable housing and our tenants and our renters living in affordable housing. So I did want to acknowledge you all here and make sure that you know that we are here continuously working on those issues of affordable housing.
I was gonna save a few of my items for our council meeting next week, but I just wanted to highlight Veterans Day in Richfield and call out our STEM school that just put on a wonderful Veterans Day presentation where they honored Veterans Day, but more importantly, honored the parents that are veterans of our kids in the school. And it was just a wonderful ceremony led by the kids to honor the military and veterans families in Richfield. And then I also want to recognize former councilmember FitzHenry, who doesn't let a Veterans Day go by without a celebration or recognition out at our All Veterans Memorial. And so we've had some little bad luck with weather the last few Veterans Days, but we had a small group out there and councilmember FitzHenry lit some cannons, and we read some of the new names on the tablets and wanted to thank him for making sure that we're never gonna miss a Veterans Day in Richfield without holding an event out at our memorial. And then just want to wish everybody here a happy Thanksgiving, and if you're staying close by, good luck with all the relatives and the cooking, and if you're traveling, safe travels.
Meeting adjourned.